All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Hi, welcome. This is the regular session meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. Today's Wednesday, November 14th, 2018. It is 6:33 PM, and we are at the Greenfield High School Cafeteria at 21 Barr Avenue, right here in lovely, amazing Greenfield, Massachusetts. Can we have a roll call, please?
Committee Member Ekstrom.
Present.
Committee Member Karen.
Here.
Committee Member Ward.
Here.
Committee Member Hollins. Committee Member Nunez.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
And I count myself, Chair, you have a quorum.
Fantastic, everyone is here in attendance. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We have a very full agenda today. Let's start off with approval of draft minutes. Is there a motion to approve draft minutes from 10:10, 18?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Any discussion on this? Yes, Member Hollins.
Uh, just one tiny item on page three of five, at the bottom, the first bullet, it's talking about enrollment.
It says the total number, first bullet, total number of school-aged children in Greenfield, 2167. Could we put in the total number of school-aged children residing in Greenfield, so it's not confused with who's attending your school?
Is there any opposition to that? Okay, seeing no opposition, we will add the word "total number of school-aged children residing in Greenfield." Okay? Superintendent?
On page one, we have identified our student representatives by first and last name. I'm very grateful for our student representatives, but I'd like to conform to our privacy policy for students, so I'd recommend that we adopt a more standard convention here, maybe first name, last initial, something consistently throughout.
Okay, any opposition to first name, last initial for student representatives? Okay, seeing none, we will make that change. Thank you, Superintendent. And, any other discussion on these minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving draft minutes for Wednesday, October 10th, with the two noted changes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, thank you. And, is there a motion to approve draft minutes from October 29th, 2018? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Alexander. Sorry about that. Any discussion on these? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving draft minutes from October 29th, 2018?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, thank you. Okay, so we will jump right into public comments. Are there any folks here from the public that would like to comment? Fantastic.
Good evening. I'm Mike Kacheski, Athletic Director.
Will you make sure the button is, is the light on? Great.
Hello, there we go.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi, I'm Mike Kacheski, Athletic Director, Greenfield Public Schools, and I first want to apologize that our bus budget's gonna be a little bit higher because our field hockey team has made the states, and they'll be traveling-
Yay! Woo!
They'll be traveling to Worcester on Saturday, WPI, to play Dennis Yarmuth in the state finals, Division II Field Hockey. I also want to recognize our football team this year, they have been selected as the Western Mass Football Officials Association Sportsman Team of the Year. It's a pretty big honor that, since, that we can remember, Coach Dean, who was only my assistant football coach, has been here since the start of, you know, time, does not remember ever a Greenfield football team getting a sportsmanship award from anybody. So we're pretty proud of that. We'll be accepting as coaches the award at their banquet on Thursday night. Girls, other than just being a great field hockey team, has also received the Division II MIAA State Sportsmanship Award, and they'll be receiving that on Saturday after, probably be at halftime of their win against Dennis Yarmuth.
Woo! That's right.
So, we're pretty proud of our athletics this fall, and I just thought that maybe that bringing these kids up here and introducing themselves and showing what, some of the things that we've done this fall, and it's not only these successful teams that we're having, we've had some great cross-country teams run, we had a girls' soccer program that made the tournament since 2004.
Yes.
Our boys' soccer program's a little bit rebuilding here, and we have our cheerers, cheering squad, and, you know, we're pretty proud of where we're at right now athletically, and we're looking forward for a great winter. So, come on up, kids. These are our captains, our captains from the field hockey team, not Nate, Nate's on the captain of the football team, Owen's the captain of football, then we have Audrey, Reagan, Olivia, Nikki, Sam, and then Coach Thayer, where are you at?
I'm at the back.
Coach Thayer's way in the back, and, so, there you go.
Yes!
Sportsmanship.
Woo!
Is there anything that we can answer for you? Any questions that you might have? We have Thanksgiving Day coming up next Thursday against Turner Falls. Tickets go on sale on Friday for that. There are tickets on sale that are on the NFHS website, I believe it is, for Saturday's game. They're $10, adults $7, students, and the game is at 1:30 for them on Saturday, 10:30 for them on next Thursday. Get out and support, we got a bonfire on Wednesday night for the football team down at Wedgewood Gardens, the old Wedgewood Gardens. So, we got a lot of exciting things going on, so, thank you again, appreciate it. Nice job.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mike, and thank you, all of you. Congratulations, best of luck on Wednesday and Saturday. You have our support-
Appreciate it.
And, yes! Killing it! Yes, go Green Wave!
You wanna say anything?
Say what?
Say hello, Mom, I can see you.
Thank you, school committee! [laughing]
Take care.
Thanks a lot, Mike.
You're welcome, Reagan.
Okay, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment this evening?
Can we comment?
What's up? Yeah, absolutely. I think we're gonna just, like, step out of our regular procedure for just a second to let our members comment on what just happened here. Cam, what did you wanna say?
Real quick, I just don't wanna take up a whole lot of time, but I know that with athletics, we get a lot of focus on wins and losses, and who scored the most goals, who's got the most points. But the sportsmanship stuff, I just couldn't be prouder of that. That's, that's pretty cool. I wasn't always the best sport.
What?
I still, I'm a very poor loser. So, it makes me feel real good that these kids are being coached very, very well. Obviously, somebody's taking notice of that, and for them to be recognized for that makes me very proud.
Thank you, Cam. Any other comments? All right. Thanks again, everybody. Have a good night. Okay, so, seeing no other members of the public wanting to comment, we'll move on straight into reports. Are the student reps here? I don't see them, so that's okay. We will move on straight to the chairperson report. I do have a quick little note and timed agenda in your packet. I got a lot of feedback from folks saying that the timed agendas are very helpful, so that's here for us to help to stay on target and focused. I've timed this meeting to be approximately three hours. I think we're currently on target, so I am asking all members to help to keep us on target. If there's a need for additional deliberation, we can look to our subcommittees, we can look to table till next month. We wanna have a chance to express ourselves, but also be mindful of our busy lives. So with that, I'm asking that we keep our comments concise, and please do allow space for each member to comment. We will be running things a little formal today. I'd like to start any deliberation with a motion. We do have two informational items that are just at the beginning of our session today, so we're not looking for votes there, those will just be discussion items. I've already touched base with the folks that are presenting about time limits and time constraints there. So I do ask that we start with a motion on each of our items, and we just try to move things along. Couple other updates in your packet from me, I'll be sending around a doodle poll to follow up about an executive session meeting for strategy for Unit ANC. We have also assigned an MSBA liaison, Mr. Mark Smith, from the mayor's office. Did also wanna let everyone know, in case they did not already know, that the city of Greenfield has a new finance director, Ms. Elizabeth Gilman, who was also with the Greenfield Public Schools several years ago. So we welcome her to her new position and look forward to working closely with her. As well, there has been a slight change of practice with our subcommittee secretary. It came to be that our schedule and the requirements for that position were a little bit unsustainable, and so, right now, the superintendent is working closely with our new subcommittee secretary in order to find a practice that is a little more sustainable for someone employed in that position, and I believe this includes having a tape recorder, well, maybe not tape, a digital recorder, and our secretary will be typing up minutes based off of the recordings. So I believe some of that has already started to happen at the subcommittee level, so just look out for that, and we will work to refine that process. In general, I just wanna say thanks to everybody. At times, I've had some difficulty with communication and coordination with members, but I feel like this month has been really good, and I appreciate folks that are getting back to me when I touch base, et cetera, so thank you so much for that. As well, I wanna just take a moment to recognize some other items that were previously listed on our calendar that we had voted, and I'm kind of reluctantly bringing this to, into the light, mainly because there's a lot of stuff listed here, and all of these things are very important. But I am also struggling with how we, as a committee, are to support our staff, our superintendent, the administration, to tackle all of the many things that come into their worlds every single day, and also show up for committee meetings with the things that we're requesting. So, I'm putting it here as a recognition of importance, but also as a reminder that we are asking a lot of our administrators. In addition, at the upcoming meeting, we're looking forward to a review of FY '20 capital improvement planning. We voted FY '19 in December of last year, and so we are on target to vote that in at our next meeting, and I believe that that is certainly on target with the city's calendar related to capital planning, and in alignment with our capital improvement policy. As well, we will welcome Bill Deal from the Collaborative for Educational Services to come to our next meeting to give us a little information about the work that CES is doing. And, let's see, I think that's it for me. You'll see at the end, I do just remind us that we can use some of our parliamentary procedure, point of order, call to question, move to table, if we need to help to move things along. So with all that being said, I'll yield to the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Given that we do have a full agenda, I will be brief. My report is in your packet and is comprehensive. I've included my monthly report, and we have several media items that have been highlighted. At press time, when these went into your packets, of course, we didn't have the great news that you heard earlier regarding our student athletes, with the public comment, not being able to speak back to our students. I just wanna share with the committee how proud I am of these students, their coaches, and the fact that something here at Greenfield High School helps instill this sense of working together, and it's really, it's not just, you know, every once in a while, it's something that happens every day here in the halls of GHS, and you see a team here that has been working and playing together for a number of years and have set their sights on something. They work so hard, they have great support, and I hope that all of Greenfield High School and all of Greenfield gets out and watches that game this Saturday, really proud of our kids. You have a number of articles, and you have the newsletters from the schools. I've heard from some committee members that they feel that this is not school business. I really hope you spend some time reading about what's happening at our schools. I hope you make it your business to know what's taking place in our schools. It certainly matters to me. You may be interested in knowing a few upcoming events. These include a gratitude day taking place at Four Corners on the 21st of this month, the annual turkey trot at Newton School, a family STEM fair at Federal Street, which is taking place, actually took place earlier this evening, a book to movie club here at the high school in the beginning of December, and the next movie coming up is Ready Player One. Also in your packet is the first effort at a, this is the journalism students in their first quarter here in the eighth grade, put together a really impressive effort, part of what we're hoping turns into ongoing efforts at a student paper, and so I'm really quite pleased that they've done such a great job on that, and that's in your packet this evening as well. I think I'll yield the rest of my time. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them. My report concludes with the business manager's report, which we will probably talk about later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any questions for myself or the superintendent? I'll just say that I, there were two things that really stood out to me in this packet, and one of them was Sarah Farazon coming to talk at GHS, and I thought that was the coolest thing, and I also just really loved this "Don't Vape Says Severus Snape." Whoever made that is fantastic. And thank you, Superintendent, for including these. I, myself, don't have kids, I'm not in the schools every day. I think that when I get this packet every month, I really appreciate seeing all that's happening in our schools, so I find it really beneficial for myself. Okay, so we will move on to subcommittees. Would anyone like to go first? How about Member Karen? I think I might do that to you every month.
My last name means alphabetical order.
All right.
So we actually met today, that's why there's not draft minutes for our meeting yet. We made a couple of committee recommendations, which are covered later in our agenda, so I can speak to those now, or just hold it till we get there? It's up to you, I guess.
I think, let's hold until we get to those places.
And then we talked a little bit, I mean, we talked about lots of things that are on here, and we talked about our next meeting of trying to discuss, making sure that, now, where did I put my notes? 'Cause now I forgot. We talked about the moving, we talked about the new PA system, and then we talked about what we wanna talk about at our next meeting, which is really the health curriculum and how that's working in our system, making sure we're meeting everything, and maybe having the head nurse come and talk to us to make sure our curriculum is expansive, comprehensive, and starting at the right ages.
Thank you, Member Karen. Any additions or questions for Member Karen? Yes, Member Hollins.
Something else that we agreed to do at the meeting was to look at the current GPS MOU for the SRO, and look at the new Model I, and to make a list of what the wording changes were, so that further action would be easier for everyone, instead of everyone having to review it.
Thanks, Member Hollins. Okay, any other commentary? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the next subcommittee. Member Ward, I think you're up.
So, our budget committee has met a couple of times. You have the minutes in here from the October 15th meeting. More recently, we met on the 7th to go over some of the things you'll see here that we discussed on the 15th in the way of the 2019 budget. For a long time, we'd been in favor of the bottom line of that budget, but we wanted to make sure there were certain items that were in a revolving fund that maybe weren't in there to start with. And as of, as of the meeting on the 7th, we have, as a subcommittee, come to an agreement on what's in there as of that, as of that budget on the 7th, that we can support from top to bottom, in the way of line items and bottom line. So, we're able to do that for you, and we've agreed to move on to taking a look at 2020, and, you know, where we can provide the best education for the best money.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any additions, questions, comments?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Very short and quick. So, on your draft minutes from October 15th, FY '19 budget, where it says FY 2019 odd placements handout, should that be OOD, OOD placements handout? Because I would hate for anyone out there in TV land to think that we're doing some odd placements with special needs students.
Oh, yes, in the underlines.
OOG.
Yeah.
Out of district, yes.
Thank you for catching that, yeah.
I just, anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Good catch. And I do just wanna remind everyone that these are draft minutes, so there may be errors like that, and if you see some, please do point them out. My understanding is that these will return to subcommittee, and the subcommittee, they will remain as draft minutes until the subcommittee approves them. Yes, Member Hollins?
I just wanna say, we haven't reviewed in committee any of our minutes for the last four meetings.
I'm not complaining, it's a thing that hasn't been reviewed for you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Member Karen?
I meant to say something earlier in my report, and I just wanted to quickly touch base, if that's okay?
Definitely.
One of the things I really, we talked about in length, is how wonderful our school and system is doing in our safety protocols, and how we were reminded of that this week with the lockdown in place at GCC, and how our superintendent and our SRO is working to create wonderful partnerships with the other schools in our town, and the other people in our town, to make sure all of the students in all of the buildings, not just our own, are safe, and make sure we're all doing a wonderful job of keeping those protocols in place. And I was really proud to see that there's communication going between the buildings and between the dis- people to keep that happening.
Thanks, Member Karen. Okay, so, I did not believe that the negotiations subcommittee met, nor personnel, is that right?
No.
So, that brings us to the school committee representatives. Member Ekstrom, anything from the collaborative?
Georgiana's been doing a great job keeping that all organized and running, as has Steve, and we are at the end-ish of completing everything. We had a meeting that was scheduled today that we had anticipated was the last of that, of our meetings for that particular contract, but it got, there were scheduling conflicts, so we didn't have it. But it will be happening soon, and then we'll move on.
For the collaborative? For educational services?
Oh!
Okay. Just, um-
Yeah, no, nothing.
I think you might be commenting on-
No, nothing.
Negotiation. Okay, great. You did a, you did a great job-
Thanks!
-of keeping it confidential, 'cause that is a priority.
Thanks!
And we appreciate the update that it's moving along.
Sure.
Anything related to the collaborative for educational service?
No.
Okay, cool. Sounds good. Thank you. No problem. And, Member Hollins, anything from planning and construction?
There was a meeting, it was a long meeting. A majority of the discussion was about the comprehensive police-fire building, and where an alternative site might be for the fire department, and there's a study taking place on a currently city-owned property, and nothing I can remember that was specific to the school district, except a review of the capital planning calendar. The requests go to planning and construction first, I believe, and then go to the capital planning committee, so that's coming right up in for everybody.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I think at our last meeting, there was some interest in getting some minutes from that committee, and are you aware if minutes are produced?
It's the last couple of times I've taken the minutes.
Okay.
I think they're posted, I have to ask the mayor.
Okay, well, I can follow up with the clerk's office, too, so I'll do that, and-
There are brief minutes that come to the chair.
And get back to you guys. Thank you. Any questions or anything for Member Hollins related to planning and construction? Okay, seeing none, we will jump right into our business. I think we might be on target with our timing. I shouldn't say that. Our first guest this evening is Ms. Tara Cludier. Come on up, thank you so much for coming. So Tara, if you just wanna give us a little bit of information about the field trip to Puerto Rico in the spring, and then we will launch our discussion with a motion. Thank you.
I believe everyone got a copy of the proposed trip, as well as the information I have from the Florida Travel Company, there's a proposal about Puerto Rico that I was emailed to the group, and I have some extra more copies of people, so many of them. I'm actually proposing for March this year, and the reason is, which I didn't plan this, but for students that you had here before you, they never come on my trips with me, because they won't miss sports, and for many of them, that's their ticket to college, it's very important. And so, by traveling during any vacation, each trip that I've done, it always excludes those kids. So I'm proposing a shorter trip that would miss three days of school in March, and I know that the student council takes trips every year, and that they miss that many days, and so I sort of think it adds to that, that other groups do that. The student council travels.
Is this not on? Could you hear me?
I could hear you. Sorry about that, Ian.
I wouldn't work with the TV, but it's fine now.
Okay.
Could you just start over?
Okay, I'll start over. No, no. I only have five minutes! I noticed, if we wanna stay on task. So I'll just briefly say that those students that were here before- So, I'll just briefly say that those students that were here before, these fantastic kids are the reason that I would like to go in March. They don't ever go on the trips. Their sports are their ticket often to college. And so, I'm proposing a trip that would miss three days of school, which is in line with other groups like the Student Council who also miss school days for educational trips. I haven't had a formal parent meeting, so I don't have firm numbers at this time. As always, when I travel, it will be a six-student to one-adult chaperone ratio. And at this time, it will probably be myself and Tamara Grogan, the French teacher. And then depending on the numbers, we will move from there.
Thank you. Superintendent, do you have any further commentary?
We began field trip planning earlier than usual this year, and I want to thank Ms. Cludier for bringing this information forward, having already gone through quite a bit of planning. It's always a bit of a catch-22 because before the School Committee approval comes forward, there is no way to present the information to the parents and the students, so you can't get firm numbers until the School Committee has approved the trip. So, some of the information is in flux until the approval is granted by the School Committee. But we met earlier with the high school principal and went through, there are three policies that govern field trips, IJOA, IJOA-1, and IJAR. We revised our field trip planning process, we've talked about communication for field trips, we've talked quite a lot about the planning for this particular trip. There's been consideration for fundraisers, a number of fundraisers have already happened. Lots of opportunities for students to access this trip regardless of their means to do so. And there's also a service component built in with the idea of, at this point, it sounds like working at a manatee rescue facility. So, I think there's something in this trip for everyone. I like how accessible it is, and I'm in support of this trip, having reviewed the planning that's gone into it.
Thank you. I somehow missed "manatee rescue."
Well, that, I asked for a list of what we could do for service, and they said "manatee rescue," and I'm like, "All right, you can stop right there."
That's amazing.
That sounds pretty awesome to me.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Spanish trip to Puerto Rico in March of 2019.
So, moved.
Moved by Member Karen, seconded by Member Ward. Is there a discussion on this? Member Hollins?
I want to thank the Superintendent for mentioning the policies that go with this trip. I actually think when you take other people's children and you send them out of the country, it's one of the biggest responsibilities we have to make sure they're safe. And there actually was an updated law, Chapter 71 S-37N, that has very specific requirements for schools, elements that must be addressed in field trip planning when you're sending children away for those hours, and that's why the policy was redone. And there's nine very specific elements that have to be in place to meet the law, and we would be not wise to not make sure all nine of those are in place when we're sending children off. So, I appreciate that we're looking at that, and that's all I wanted to say. It's really important.
Thanks, Member Hollins. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Just a follow-up. Those nine elements have been met?
I don't know.
Oh. I'm not familiar with the new law nor the nine elements.
So, it appears to not be a new law. I'm looking at our policy right now. What was noted on our policy is from 2003, Chapter 71 S-37N.
It's, may I say, you're looking at not the right one. It's not labeled correctly. The one that's dash R is the new policy, and the title should be Guidelines for Field Trip Planning.
That is correct, that's what I'm looking at.
It was just passed in 216.
Okay, so maybe there is a typo here related to citation of the actual law. The things that are noted are: Safety of Transportation, Safety of Accommodations, Cost, Consider Economic Diversity of Families, Encourage Volunteer Payments When Appropriate, Expectations for Fundraising by Students, Consider What Is Being Sold, To Not Include Unchaperoned Door-to-Door Solicitation by Children, Time Away From School, Appropriateness of Trip for Grade Level, Trip Approval Process, Staff-Chaperon-Student Ratio for Supervision, Screening and Training Chaperones to Assure Safety and Conformance with School Committee and School Guidelines, As Appropriate Information Sessions and Materials for Parents, Including Common Questions and Answers, and Provision for Any Required Student Accommodation for Health-Food Program as Applicable for Students' Age. So, yes, this is all online, and as Member Hollins noted, IJOA-R is the one that I, part of the policy that I just read. Any, yes, Mayor Martin?
So, to follow up, how have we guaranteed the island, from the media tells us that there's 90% without power, the roadways, the hospitals, the public safety systems are not functioning. Main Street Media tells us a number of different things about the island of Puerto Rico. How are you guaranteeing the safety of the students?
Well, we are traveling to a very specific part of the island. They actually spent most of their money immediately reconciling and repairing and all of these things with where they make their money, which is tourism. And so, the tourist spots are the places that are more ready. And so, and this company, Explorca, has, they are guaranteeing us that all of the places that we're going are fully functioning and safe.
The cost of the trip for students is about $1,750 is the state here, and the adults is 2013. Is the fundraising to include everybody's round-trip ticket and lodging and food?
Students do individual fundraising, is how I've always done it. And so, unless we, we usually do like a bingo night, which makes a lot of money, and that goes to whichever families participate. And then when we're doing other kinds of fundraisers, it's students raising individual money for their own trip.
So, do we raise money for the adults, the six?
The company provides, for each six, one adult. So, it's a very widespread student tour company policy is that it's included in the price.
So, the, so each adult per six students, are there more adults after that that have to pay the $2,013?
At this time, I don't know because I haven't had a parent meeting, but I have two parents that have expressed possibly doing that. And when I did that in the past, they went through the fingerprinting process through the school system, which they had to travel out of town to do, but
How have you arranged for the students that are missing three classes, or three days of classes?
All the teachers will be notified, and we have paperwork that students do if they go away with their parents or if they're going to be out for any number of days, then they get in touch with their teachers ahead of time. The teachers sign off that they have talked to the students about that.
And the classes that you and Ms. Grogan have, how will they be treated while you're not there?
There'll be a substitute.
Substitute for five days?
Not five, three.
Three days?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Mayor Martin, any further questions?
None.
Member Ward?
I don't have too many questions, I don't think, but I have comments because my daughter was a part of the trip last year. And the fundraising, communication, everything was very smooth. We felt very comfortable with her being away. And I think you've been, you've been doing this a long time, yes?
Yes.
How many years?
Twenty-two.
How many trips?
Thirteen.
It was, and it showed. The experience was there. There was some difficulty getting, dealing with the airline on the way back. And I felt right at ease with the communication with both the Tamara Grogan and Mrs. Cludier and my daughter. So, she made it back in time for her big softball game. She wasn't too worried about the school that she missed. Thanks.
Any other members would like to comment or question? Okay, Member Hollins?
I have two questions, but I want to mention the date, I gave 216 as the date when the policy was redone, not, I wasn't mentioning the law. I have two questions, Tara. The first is whether or not, when you go to Puerto Rico, if the students, if there's a way that you collaborate with social studies or history on the issues with Puerto Rico and their statehood or their elections or whatever. And the second question is whether or not with technology today, there's a way that students that don't actually go on the trip can follow the students that do go on the trip and what they're seeing with YouTube and movies. And a lot of times with other kinds of exploration, there's ways students can follow. So, I was just wondering if there's a connection for students that don't go, or if there could be.
So, when I've traveled with history teachers, that's always an advantage, which I have a number of times on my trips. Part of the job of these companies is to provide that information. So, they'll take us to a historical place, and we'll either have a local guide, that this is their specialty, to be in that city and, you know, or in the fort or whatever it is. We'll have people there to teach us those things, teach the students as well as me often about the current state of Puerto Rico and historical things to that nature. They do, this company and many companies do offer it, but Explorca, and there's a page in your packet about it, they have a tour diary for each group that travels. It's on page four. And it lets parents and friends see pictures of the group as they travel. And so, there's posts that come from the company. It's like a site that we can enable to, whoever we would like to share it with. I have also, my students then will present something to their classes when they get back as a PowerPoint. They did it for the faculty as well last year. So, those are the two ways I would say we share that.
Thank you. Member Ward?
I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay, call the question. So, there's a motion on the table? Moved by Kitty Karen to approve the 2019 field trip to Puerto Rico and seconded by Member Ward. I'll just make one quick closing comment that I appreciate you, I appreciate all of our
Point of order.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That would be for the amendment.
Were you, that's correct. Thank you, Mayor Martin. So, no, to call the question?
Right.
Okay. So, motion on the table, we are voting on the motion now. Is that correct? That's correct, process, right? So, there's a motion on the table, we're voting on the motion now. We were just voting on calling the question. So, the motion now is to approve the trip. All those in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Thank you, Tara, thanks for coming, thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, our second guest, this is simply informational, is Ms. Kat Allen.
And also Ms. Alana Gerjoy.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
These two are here from the Coalition, the Communities That Care Coalition. Kat is the Coalition Coordinator, and Alana, what is your last name?
Gerjoy.
Gerjoy, welcome. I don't know your title.
Actually, yeah, so I am now the Coordinator of the Safe Schools, Safe Streets Coalition, the Foresty Coalition for Greenfield.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, these two were invited to give us a little information about the collaborative work that we do together. And I've asked that they speak for approximately four minutes to allow time for committee members' questions and feedback. So, take it away. There is no, there's no need for a vote here, so this is just simply for us for information.
Great, thank you. It's really nice to be here, we're really excited about this. I'm Kat Allen, this is Alana. We both work at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments in the Partnership for Youth. I'm most of the time where my Communities That Care hat, but as of October 1st, I now have two hours per week on the Greenfield Safe Schools, Smart Schools, Safe Schools, Safe Streets Coalition. Used to be Safe Schools, Smart Schools, a decade ago, and I keep saying it over and over again. And so, I'll be managing this grant, but in the meantime, we also have Alana full-time coordinating the project. And, oh, closer to the mic, thank you. Full-time, Alana will be coordinating the project, and we have just hired for 10 hours a week, Siobhan Fitzgerald, the High School Guidance Counselor, will be working with us as the parent engagement facilitator. And Kara Younger, who is one of the special education teachers at the high school, will be the youth engagement coordinator. So, we've got this fantastic team as well as an office here at the high school and lots of wonderful participation from, all the way from Jordana and Karen and Karen and guidance counselors and school nurses and so on to do all kinds of great work. And I didn't say, the impetus for all this, or the way that we can make this happen, is that we were collectively awarded a five-year, $125,000-a-year grant from Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, a drug-free communities grant. So, the school district previously had five years of this funding, we've had a one-year gap, and now we're continuing with the same action plan. We've switched the fiscal agent and received another five years of funding and are unbelievably excited about the dream team that we have going into this and all the cooperation that we've had from the district. So, Alana's going to tell you a little bit about the plan, and then I'll say just a couple of words.
That's great, yeah, thank you. We're really happy to be here. And so, yes, the way that drug-free communities grants work is we have to actually submit a pretty detailed work plan, and so we use the work plan that had been in place before and really worked off of that so that we can continue the great work that Foresty was doing and then kind of updated it to include things like vaping, which people are very concerned about right now. So, a few examples of the kinds of things that we're going to be doing as the coalition is engaging multi-sectors in the community to do a variety of different things. And we're going to do things like parent education and engagement, things like holding workshops and providing educational materials for parents so that they can learn about things like vaping, you know, commercial marijuana legalization, alcohol and other drugs, how to talk to students about these issues, and really how to help protect youth. So, those are some of the things that they do, and that's a really important piece, and it's evidence-based. We also have a youth engagement and leadership piece, and so the Youth for Change Student Group will be continuing and be reconvening again, and they'll be doing a lot of work in the community out at events and being at events to show that they are student leaders and to be supporting and engaging other members of the school community. And then we're going to be working on a community-wide and even state and national level to work on policy, things like how do we encourage local businesses and other policy related to marijuana legalization that will protect youth as much as possible. So, that's just sort of a snapshot of a few of the different things we'll be doing. We'll be doing a lot of different things, and you'll be seeing us all over social media and in the community out there being active.
And I just wanted to say before we open up to questions, just, I mean, I mentioned this dream team, but we've got a number of different programs. The health teachers, Sally Gilliland and Joey at the high school are implementing evidence-based programs there. This is just in general. Greenfield has been a really, really wonderful partner for us to work with. We have nine school districts in our catchment area. Vaping education between, Karen's been doing a lot of professional development with the teachers and the administrative assistants have been sending stuff home to parents. The school nurse, Kelly Savitri, although I might be saying that wrong, has been phenomenal with Esper and with parent education as well. So, it's really, and Jordana and Karen and Karen couldn't have been more supportive as we applied for this grant and as we roll out programs. So, we're just, just wanted to say a really big thank you for the prevention work that's happening in Greenfield in general.
Thank you. Jordana, would you like to add anything?
I'd like to thank you all for the continuing partnership, and I think this is beneficial to our students here, it's beneficial to the community, and I think it helps us to inform our work. Kat, in particular, has been a really great resource as we have tried to think about being a leader in prevention and think about aligning curriculum and staying ahead of and really not reacting to. not reacting to, but being in a position to help shape what's happening so that we can help our students make healthy choices. And I think Greenfield's work in this area has really taken hold. And when you see things like what we're celebrating here tonight, I think it's in part because we have a foundation in which we are really talking about how to support youth in a wide variety of settings, how to build relationships and how to help them make authentic choices. That has to do with prevention, but it has to do with relationships, and I think our partnerships have helped us understand and strengthen all those ways that we reach and connect with our youth. Thank you.
Thanks Superintendent. Thank you so much for the work that you do, I appreciate the collaboration. I've sat in on a couple of meetings and the one thing that stands out to me is how fantastic it is to have so many different groups that are in our community represented in the room and everyone working together toward the wellness of our entire region, of the youth in the entire region. And so that is really, really powerful, and I appreciate the, the collaboration that we have with you. Are there any comments or questions for Kat and Alana? Okay.
Can I make two more comments?
Yes, absolutely.
One, the strength of this collaboration is borne out in the data. The substance use rates have been going down and down and down, and we'd be happy to share that information, but it's really, really encouraging. And secondly, we brought some items to share with you. First of all, if you have any questions about vaping, this is the one place where things are not getting better, and I brought, and that's not just here, it's everywhere. So we brought some information so that everyone can know, and we brought a little bit of swag. We have these, you might have seen the billboards around the Make Time for Family Time items that we're offering up to parents when they come to our events and so on, and we would love to pass these around and let you choose an item from the bag, and we'll take the leftovers from Jordana or Karen back when we're done, so.
Super, thank you, thanks very much.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks a lot, have a wonderful night.
You too.
Okay, so our next guest is Amy Donovan, she is the Program Director from the Franklin County Solid Waste. And Amy, prior to the meeting, gave me a couple of things to pass out. There are not copies for everyone, so if we could share just a review of these copies, that would be great. If you could pass that over. And actually, Katie, if you want to start with these and pass them over, there's only one copy of each of those. Do you need one for yourself at all for reference?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay, great.
Well, thank you so much for having me, I'm very excited to be here and give you some great results and report back about the very successful district-wide compost program that we have instituted over the past two or three years. Just a little background about my organization, Franklin County Solid Waste Management District was formed in 1989 to help towns manage waste and the always escalating costs of trash disposal. So all of our programs are designed to help entities within Franklin County save money on waste disposal and to manage materials as effectively as possible. In our work, we have achieved some fantastic results, we have seven town compost programs at transfer stations, and without the Greenfield schools, in this total, we had achieved 19 public school compost programs. Now, with Greenfield schools joining us, we have a record 25 public schools, including seven high schools, composting all possible food and paper waste from cafeterias and kitchens. So this has gotten us some really great press and some accolades from industry journals, et cetera, from across the country. We were recently featured in Resource Recycling Magazine and BioCycle, which is the composting journal. And so, I've just had a great time with this, and I wanted to come in and thank you all and tell you some of the results. So, a little bit more about Greenfield and the Franklin County Solid Waste District. The Solid Waste District is supported by 21 member towns, and Greenfield decided not to be a member about a long time ago, probably 15 years ago. And we've continued on and worked with Greenfield when, you know, whenever we could as a, kind of a mutual aid kind of thing, and enjoyed a good relationship there with the Greenfield DPW. Back in 2015, we were approached by members of Greening Greenfield who said, "We gotta get our schools composting like the rest of the schools in this county." So I worked with Greening Greenfield and the Greenfield Department of Public Works and the School Department, and we applied for a MassDEP grant, that's the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and we got it. And it's been a great three-year grant, it was $30,000 for education and implementation of these programs. We just finished in June of 2018, at the end of the fiscal year. I worked with each Greenfield public schools, seven in all, because I had great results with the Math and Science Academy before they moved. They had achieved an 82% compost, no, 86% compost rate, meaning that 86% of the waste from the cafeteria was composted and only 14% was recycling or, or trash, mostly trash. But these schools have been able to realize very small amounts of trash in the end. So, now, all the schools together are potentially composting about five tons a month. That's all six of the Greenfield public schools, not all the schools in the county, just the five, six Greenfield public schools, are composting about five tons a month or 50 tons a year. So this is not some little bucket in the corner where people throw an apple core once in a while. This is all of their food waste, which unfortunately with children, we know that they don't always eat their lunch. It's just the nature of the game. And it includes all types of food waste, paper waste, and even the paper lunch trays can be composted. So don't, don't think that the students are all throwing away their lunches, it's, it's paper too that's in there. So we've reduced cafeteria and kitchen trash by 70 to 90% in most cases. So the handouts that I passed out, the, the four-color pictures show some of the setups in the cafeterias, and I've kept the setups very similar. As students move through the school system, they'll see that same yellow compost barrel, the same signage, the same sorting procedure at each school for maximum success. So each school has a two or four cubic yard compost dumpster that is emptied weekly by Triple T trucking, and the materials are brought to Martin's Farm right here in Greenfield. There, they are ground up into, of small size, sorry, I don't know the size, and put out into compost rows and composted over a three to five-month period. So because it goes to Martin's Farm, this program accepts all types of food. If you compost at home, you know you should not compost meat, bones, and dairy at home, but here at school and in the compost program at the Greenfield Transfer Station and at the other seven in the county, you can put in any kind of food plus paper, and Martin's Farm can handle it. In most cases, trash dumpsters at the schools have been downsized or emptied less frequently. And the goal is to save money on trash disposal because trash disposal is very expensive and is only expected to get more expensive in the future because we are literally running out of places to put trash. We do have a trash incinerator here in Western Massachusetts, but it is at capacity every day and it accepts 400 tons of trash a day. So, towns and waste haulers are increasingly sending trash to faraway places like Ontario and New York State, and that's not helping the carbon footprint of this trash or the cost associated. I've also set up onsite compost bins and worm bins at each school so that students and teachers can get a hands-on experience in watching waste transform into soil. I've given frequent educational presentations, lunchtime reminders, and anything else I could do to get these lessons into the students' hearts and into their minds. I want to thank all staff members, faculty, administration, the school department, the school district, the school committee, the staff, I already said that, but I'm going to say it again, the staff, the students, the MassDEP, and the partners in the programs such as Greening Greenfield. Students have really embraced these programs, and I've seen culture shifts happening in the schools, such as at the recent harvest sampler at Four Corners School. They had a fabulous setup, a display of student artwork about composting, and they were selling or giving away, you know, the little bags of finished worm compost that they had made in their-
Nice.
Giving it away.
Cool.
It was very cute.
That's cool.
Also, the Waste Warriors competition, I sent around a picture of this too. There were, there was a student initiative, student-run competition across the county amongst whatever public schools wanted to participate, and Greenfield High School won. So, they had the best reduction in trash because of, probably because of this program. And like I said, almost all the schools, well, all the schools are involved in some sort of waste diversion, so it was quite impressive that Greenfield won this whole, this whole competition. So, the students and Kathy Wilkins were great in leading that here, and that picture reflects some of their enthusiasm. We've had some great press for the 25 public schools that now compost, and I sent around an article from the Greenfield Recorder. These initiatives are included in the Sustainable Greenfield Master Plan, so it is, it is more than, again, more than just a bucket in the cafeteria, this is what our community wants to do. And my, my biggest hope for all of this is that students will take these lessons home to their families and strengthen waste diversion, recycling, and composting at home in the city of Greenfield and beyond. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Amy, thank you, it was very comprehensive, I appreciate all the information. Are there any questions or comments for Amy? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I don't know about you all, but I would love a little bag of worm dirt, you know? It's real, it's keeping us all alive. Okay, so, let's move on to our next very serious, very serious agenda item. This is agenda item number four, the FY19 budget vote. This was tabled at our last meeting, folks. I think the best way to handle this is to allow Steve and the Superintendent a couple of minutes to speak to any changes that have been applied, any process. One second, Member Ward. Of course, Member Warren, Member Hollins can, or whoever was involved at the subcommittee level can comment during deliberation. I want to start with our administrators though, just to have a little presentation, then we'll have a motion, and then we'll move into any deliberation. Did you have a question before we begin? Okay, what do you say?
What I want to say is, before Steve gets started, I want the committee to know that the budget subcommittee has spent a couple, two hours directing Steve, and that at our last meeting on the 7th, which was a week ago, we all fell in love with everything he's doing. So, we, we voted to support it, okay?
Thank you, Member Warren. Okay, so Superintendent, would you like to start, or would you like Steve to start? Do you, okay. Steve, thank you so much, shake it away.
Okay, first of all, there was a handout, and that was in your packet, and basically it, it goes through what the subcommittee has done, but I want to first start with the FY19 budget statements. Right now, we're having a little bit of problem with munis as what, pertaining to posting, so we're trying to get that cleared up. Usually I have statements for you at these meetings, but frankly, they're kind of a mess right now, and they would create more problems and questions than they're going to solve at this point till we can get that posting situation cleaned up. So as soon as I get those, I will send those out to you via email, maybe another week or so, but they, they should be there. Part two of the budget report, basically outlines what the subcommittee did. Part A, which is, has a strike-through on it, originally the subcommittee voted to move these, especially the two people, but Therapy Specialist Speds and Therapy Specialist Sped to the schools. After a little more deliberation on that, it was decided that they do belong within Therapy Specialist Sped, especially given the fact that that's how it's coded on the DESI, state, DESI Chart of Accounts. So, they were moved to the schools, moved back for this iteration into the Therapy Specialist Sped line. So, I included it, crossed it out, so you know what happened, and it gives you a little bit of a track record as to what's going on. That was a voted, then it was voted to go back, so that is reflected in this budget. The subcommittee also voted to make modifications to school choice funding. Now, the big thing here was that several teaching, regular teaching lines from the high school as well as some other places were being funded through school choice. So if you look at page two of the handout, you'll see all those folks there, they were all funded out of choice, came to a total of $896,994 out of choice. So, all those folks were moved back to regular funding. Within the detailed budget, you'll see that highlighted by yellow, a yellow highlight for all those folks. Then, to offset that move to the regular budget, transportation was used to, as choice funding, in order to offset the choice funding to the regular budget, the regular budget to the choice funding, that would be transportation, and that's that second box, Transportation Staff, Coordinator, Crossing Guards, Contracted Services, Charter School, McKitty Vento, Sick Leave Buyback, and Course Reimbursement. There was some discussion as to the fact that all, it all came from choice, I'm not choice, transportation, moving transportation costs back, moving transportation costs to choice. But it was agreed to at the subcommittee meeting that although not optimal, it is okay to do that, and that motion passed in order to go ahead and make this switch above. Those were the only two things that were passed at the subcommittee meeting in order to make those changes. So the budget behind this reflects those changes, it reflects what the subcommittee voted, and the bottom line still has not changed from $18,575. So I think it's ready to go.
Thank you, Steve. Superintendent, would you like to add anything before we hear a motion?
I would encourage the committee to move forward with passing this budget tonight so we can fully focus our efforts on developing next year's budget, which is where we are in this year's budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Ward?
I'd like to make your motion.
Is your mic on?
It is now. I move to support the revised FY19 budget as presented.
Seconded by Member Alexander. Any discussion on this? Member Hollins?
I think there maybe is a confusion, at least for me. We, on number two, the strikeouts, we specifically voted to take two staff who are not diagnostic prescriptive, their teaching staff, a teacher, a social worker, who have always been in the North Parish budget, and our motion was to move Elizabeth Budnarsky and Nancy Garlock from the Special Ed Systemwide Budget to the Academy of Early Learning at North Parish budget, and that followed up an earlier budget that we withdrew to make sure we got all the full-time early childhood personnel in the early childhood budget. There were then three other people who were not exactly teachers, they were diagnostic prescriptive behaviorists or something who went where the need was, and we had talked about getting those, keeping those people in the section of diagnostic prescriptive teachers, but I don't recall ever thinking that the early childhood teachers should be under, I don't agree that we moved all five of them back, I think one and two, we specifically voted that they be in the early childhood budget. Doesn't change the bottom line- Doesn't change the bottom line, it's just, those two people were always full-time in the Special Ed Early Childhood budget.
And we voted that they go back there.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Member Ward, did you want to speak to your motion at all? Okay. Any other comments, questions? Mayor Martin?
Could we have that explanation? Is that the first block?
That's the first block that's been, been lined out, yeah. Yeah, actually, those one, two, three, four, five, and as I recall, the conversation being is that the first two, Bednarski and Garlock, go to North Parish. As I look through the budget, those other three, Paige, David, and Caples, are actually stationed at individual schools. So, in order to be consistent, those three should be placed into GHS Teaching, Federal School, Federal Street Teaching, as well as GHS Teaching. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me in order to move two to the location rather than moving all of those to the location. So, my understanding of the, the motion was to move them all back to Therapy Specialists because they are properly coded by, under the DESI Code, as Therapy Specialists.
So, then, they were hired as Therapy Specialists, isn't there a compliance to stay within the hiring job description?
They were, they were hired as whatever they do, the Therapy Specialists, at the individual schools, however, they're coded, previously, they were not coded properly as Therapy Specialists for the end-of-the-year report. With this budget, which I did not do, they were moved to these Therapy Specialist Lines, I don't know, the 5,200 or something like that line, so they fall into the end-of-the-year report more easily and more easily tracked when you do, when you fill out that big report at the end of the year.
Okay, so I understand you put these particular Therapy Specialists into specific site line items. Thank you.
Member Hollins?
This is very concerning, this is an error. Elizabeth Bednarski is a certified early childhood preschool teacher. She's no more a Therapy Specialist than any other Special Ed Teacher, and every single she was hired as a Special Ed Preschool Teacher? I don't know what happened, that somebody coded her as a Therapy Specialist, but she's always been the Special Ed Teacher in the preschool. And we talked about it and took a specific vote that she go back in the budget. The other people at the bottom are behaviorists.
So, can you offer an amendment to the motion? It sounds like you're interested in moving two individuals, one and two, that are cross out on the front page of our document.
Yes.
Two back to their sites, and review of the coding?
I'd like, I'd like the motion that we made and voted unanimously to be followed, and it was, that Elizabeth Bednarski, who's an early childhood preschool teacher, and Nancy Garlock, who's, has always been the preschool social worker, be in the budget for the Academy of Early Learning, where they have been every year. We voted to move them back because they're not diagnostic prescriptive therapy.
So, what I'm hearing you say...
To amend, yes.
Is that you are suggesting an amendment to the motion to reflect moving Elizabeth Bednarski and Nancy Garlock from Sped Systemwide budget to the Academy of Early Learning at North Parish budget?
Correct, because neither one has ever been considered a Therapy Specialist, and every year, they've been in the preschool budget until this year.
Okay. Member Ward, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Maybe I'm misunderstanding again. So, back to Page One, it states to move to North Parish, which is AEL. That was done, or was not done?
It was done, then rescinded.
Okay.
So, now they're gonna go back.
Okay, so rescinded by...
By whom?
By the Subcommittee. The, the vote was to rescind the movement of these five Therapy Specialists.
Okay, so the minutes from that meeting, I think, are the, on Page Two?
That was the previous meeting.
That was the previous meeting?
Mm-hmm.
It was rescinded at the meeting I wasn't at?
Exactly.
Oh, okay. That's why I'm confused. Thank you.
Well, we have a tape, so we can listen to it.
Just one final comment, is that, when we say "teaching staff," is that a teacher? Educator with a certification, or is it not?
Are you asking the Superintendent? My understanding is that it's an educator with certification, that's my understanding. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So, all of the number fives have, of that five-person group, have teaching certificates?
No, Number One is... I'd prefer not to get into licensure information about personnel, but I think there are some individuals who are Unit A Special Education Teaching Staff, there are some who are, provide special education services, there are others who are behaviorists, there are others who are instructional assistants, there are different types of staff in this list, and that was gone through at the Subcommittee. I would like to note something, you do have draft minutes in your, in your packet, as the mayor mentioned, that refer to the minutes. At the time that this motion was made, there was discussion about the concern, which is when you begin to go through a budget, which is 99.9% done, and start to move people from one line to another, you're not affecting the bottom line, you're just moving them from one cost center to another, and these are special education staff who are in the Special Education District-wide category, but then they're assigned to particular schools. Moving them doesn't mean, this doesn't affect their, their salary, doesn't affect their job, if they're listening and people are hearing individual names, it does make me uncomfortable for staff that are perhaps watching this from home, but there's a concern that there is an unintended effect of how you handle one individual is how you have to handle the others, and, and there's a need for consistency there, and that was discussed at the Subcommittee level. And so, I just want to reiterate that this is something that would be a useful exercise in next year's budget, to talk about how do we want, how does the School Committee want to see these people reflected? It's in some ways stylistic, it has an impact on the end-of-the-year report, and how accurate we can classify these individuals, and those are all good conversations, but to begin doing that now, when we're so close to the end of the year, it really doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, we do have an amendment and then a motion, so is there any further...
Just...
Yes, Mayor Martin?
The, under North Parish, under the specific site, it shows a social worker, and that is part of the 10-8 budget total. Has that been removed, or is that to continue to be included in the budget total? On Line 14?
All right.
Page One?
Yep, that is a social worker line, doesn't have anyone, that is a, one of the meta-lines, doesn't have anyone assigned to it, but it does have a value to it right now. So, that, that is, that will continue to be a broad line.
So, that's a vacant position?
For some reason, no one was assigned to that line.
That is the person we're talking about, Nancy Garlock. She's a social worker of the preschool, has been...
I, I do not have a, within the financial system, no one is assigned to that one, so, so we'd have to look at that.
Well, I'm just explaining that's who the 71 is.
So, that would be, and that's my interest, isn't it? There's no one assigned to that salary position?
Exactly.
And yet, we've moved the salary position person to, to District-wide?
They were all, from the very beginning of the budget process, they were put in District-wide.
And now they're back?
And now they're gonna be put back in, so, when I go ahead and put those folks back in, I'll have to put that person into the right spot, which it looks like that Line 12 there.
And then that'll reduce the District-wide by 71,000?
I don't think it's that high, but somewhere around there, yeah.
Okay, and I do appreciate your, trying to put somebody else's puzzle together.
Okay, we have an amendment on the table and then a motion. So, first, there is the amendment to bring, to move the two listed individuals, Bednarski and Garlock, to their individual site positions. All those, are we ready to vote on that amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. So, now, the motion on the table is to support the revised FY19 budget with the included movement of Bednarski and Garlock to their individual sites. Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you.
And we look forward to 2020 Conversation. Get excited, everyone, it's just around the corner. Okay, so, our next item, I realize that I forgot to report out on the Policy Subcommittee. Member Alexander was unfortunately not able to attend, so I did chair one brief Policy and Program Subcommittee meeting that took place on Tuesday, October 23rd. I'm, I'm gonna report on this quickly now because it's relevant to Item Number Five, which is an update on the School Attorney Policy, B D G. And so, we did meet, we did talk about the attorney policy, there was a consensus reached by members that a related agenda item may be added to the next Subcommittee meeting during which MASC is present, so that the following questions can be asked. How should we proceed with policies that are prescriptive, specifically those that refer to budget development? And do we consider our policies to be in draft form? How do we manage this process? So, that's something that will take place when MASC is with us, that meeting is scheduled now for November 28th in the evening. And then, let's see, related to, not related to attorney policy, or actually, both of the other consensus were directly related to conversation with the attorney policy, and a consensus was reached by members to request an opinion from the attorney on the appropriate level of access the chairperson should have to the School Committee Council, and a consensus was reached by members to ask the Budget and Finance Subcommittee to consider adding a line item to the budget for non-routine legal services to include negotiations and/or a School Committee legal counsel. So, let's tackle the referral to the Budget Subcommittee. Unless there's any opposition from the Budget Subcommittee or other members, the Policy Subcommittee would like you all to consider adding a line item for non-routine legal services. So, if you could include that in conversation in the future, does that work for you, Chair Ward? Any other, any comments related to that, any questions? Yes, Member Hollins?
I just appreciate the structure of adding and subtracting line items through our Subcommittee process.
Thanks, Member Hollins. Any questions from this side? Okay. And then, so, the consensus here related to getting in touch with attorney is directly related to this agenda item. So, I would entertain a motion to move, to request the attorney to, request attorney recommendation on current policy and best practice for chairperson engagement with attorney. Move by Member Karen, second by Member Ekstrom. Is there any discussion on this? Mayor Martin?
Can we be more specific to the attorney? Do we have two attorneys now, or do we have one?
We have two attorneys, we are still working with two attorneys, so if you would like to put forward an amendment to be specific about the attorney, that's fine. The Subcommittee didn't put forward...
Since we have two, I'm just thinking it should be specific in the motion. I have no preference, it is, I think that would help.
Okay. At the Subcommittee, that was not part of the discussion that I recall. Does anyone have a preference?
I think we've had...
Yes, Mayor Martin?
I think we've had an understanding that one of our attorneys is a special, or rather, very familiar with special education regulations and law, and another one is more oriented to our School Committee law and municipal law. So, this appears it would be non-routine legal services to deal with the School Committee, rather than special education?
It's a motion to, to request attorney recommendation on our current policy and best practice for chairperson engagement with attorney. So, it's someone taking a look at our policy and also common practice among Subcommittees, and engagement between chairperson and attorney. I think either are qualified.
So, your preference is for Attorney Smith?
I don't have a preference.
Okay. So, then, I would, I would suggest that we specify the attorney we're requesting the interpretation from to be Attorney Quinn, Gordon Quinn, from Sullivan Hayes Quinn?
Okay, so, amendment to include specific Attorney Quinn as a recommendation here. Do you accept the amendment, Katie? Okay? That's fine with you, right, as a second?
Does that close the door to using anyone else?
It makes the motion very specific to only ask Attorney Quinn one, his opinion.
It doesn't change the goal that you're trying to accomplish.
It doesn't change the goal to have an input from an attorney about our policy.
Sure, just a, a point of clarification, Attorney Smith, it's my understanding, served as general counsel to the School Committee and the District for approximately three decades, including special education, but on a range of areas. Certainly, he's recognized across the state as a special education expert, and we continue to use him for that, but he has provided general counsel on a range of matters. I think this is well within either attorney's expertise. I do caution against making a motion that is so specific that if one of them is not available, that we have to then wait a month and wait for this body to reconvene. I think the purpose and the intent that I heard expressed at the Subcommittee level was that currently, the policy is so overly prescriptive that the Chair cannot access legal services without the vote of a committee, and in this motion, you see how prescriptive the committee's actions in accessing legal services actually are. So, I'd recommend a slightly more open policy that might suggest, to start with Attorney Quinn, and if a second opinion, or due to time constraints, if he's not available to take this on, that the Chair have some flexibility there.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Yeah, I, I would respond that I think the size of the office for each attorney is, is, should be a benefit for the rapid reply that we'd be looking for. S H Q has a number of attorneys working with our attorney, and Attorney Smith has maybe a smaller office, and if he is busy, then there is really no one backup to do the research. Secondly, I believe the, again, this attorney firm in Springfield represents about 30 other municipalities, and I think they might have a shortcut to get to the, how do other chairs of School Committees access legal, legal advice, and maybe we can cut and pace some existing policy that meets the needs of the Chair. And the Superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor Martin. So, we have an amendment on the table and also a full motion, yes, Member Ekstrom?
So, if we do this, does that mean we're cutting Attorney Smith out entirely?
No, 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 it's literally just specific to this one thing. So, yes, if, say, I contact Attorney Quinn, I am to only receive the opinion of Attorney Quinn and not Peter Smith on this one particular item. It's only specific to this. So, the amendment is to be specific to Attorney Quinn, are we ready to vote on that? Okay, great. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, some reluctant ayes, looks like that was unanimous. So, the motion on the table is to request attorney recommendation on current policy and best practice for chairperson engagement with Attorney Quinn specifically. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I said that a little bit incorrectly, but we are requesting the opinion of Attorney Quinn. Thank you, everyone, for that. So, I'm, just want to check in before we dive in... So, I just want to check in before we dive into our next topic, which is a big one. So the Superintendent goals, how's everybody feeling? It's 8:00 PM. We are pretty well on target, schedule-wise. Is there a need to take a break? Do we want to charge forward? How we doing? Keep going. Okay. Okay. So, this is the FY19 Superintendent goals. What you have in front of you is a copy of the most updated Superintendent goals. The Superintendent worked to incorporate some of the feedback that was given at the special meeting. For those who may be watching, we did have a special meeting in between our last meeting and today, specific to Superintendent goals. Mr. Glenn Kuchar from the MASE came to help facilitate that conversation. At that conversation, or during that meeting, the Superintendent presented a draft version of goals. The committee gave input, and this is a second draft of those goals. I will yield first to the Superintendent to review. Mayor Martin, did you have a question? Sure.
I move to support the FY19 Superintendent goals as presented.
Okay. Second by Member Ward. Okay. Any discussion on the goals? And Superintendent, are you interested in speaking to your goals? Mayor Martin, of course, you can speak to your motion if you'd like.
Yes. I just want to say, speaking to the motion, that the, this has been a long, drawn-out affair, and I think everyone has had a chance to get into the weeds on every item, every goal, every interdiction that we have proposed. So, I think at this point, the Superintendent is well on her way to some goals that are easily identifiable, and that, just like the budget, we're going to be evaluating Superintendent's next year's goals in a very few number of moons. So I certainly don't want to oppress any discussion. I'm just saying that the Superintendent's done a fine job of interpreting our intentions and our multiple discussions, and I think it's going to be a challenge for us to evaluate these goals in the near future.
Yes, Member Ward. Thank you, Mayor Martin.
I'd like to echo what the mayor said and keep this discussion to two to three minutes and vote.
Thank you, Member Ward. Superintendent, would you like to comment at all before we hear more discussion? Okay. Thank you. Member Hollins?
I did what you said, which was to go back and review Mr. Kuchar's advice, and the requirement is the goals be smart, that they're clear, timely, and he gave an example to everybody, and he's, during 2018-19, I'm going to lose 30 pounds by June. And he said, you know, he went on, that's the whole way he introduced the meeting. And I have no objection with the intention of any goal, it's just if they're not worded that way, then when we go to the goal itself, then when we go to evaluate it, we don't have a clear time marker or... So there's another discussion we had tonight on policy where it said, the wording's vague. So I went through every goal. I'm not talking about every single item under every goal, just the goal statement, it's not written as a SMART goal to me. It doesn't say... I looked at five or six other school districts, and they, the goals are just, like Glenn said, in 2018, we're going to contact four schools and come up with three ideas. It's clear, and then the evaluation's easy. So I didn't have a concern with, you know, what the intent is, but I have no idea really what we're going to do for improving curriculum, because it's all so broad without being specific. Specifically written, just the goal statement. And the other thing I want to say is, I went back to, we had only two easily worded goals last time. We had this whole binder just on those two, and then it was hard getting it together, because I think if we could just have a simply worded goal, the evaluation is not going to tie up a huge amount of time for us next time.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any other comments or questions for the Superintendent? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Just quickly, I agree with Dr. Hollins, and I think for all of us to identify with a simple goal is, when you might go to the health clinic, the doctor or physician's assistant or nurse practitioner will say, you go home, take two aspirins three times a day. So that's a goal. You identify the problem, that's your symptom. You go for an evaluation, then you get a direction, and then your goal is to take three aspirins two times a day, or two aspirins three times a day, and then you evaluate again. So that's what I was pertaining to and alluding to in the beginning, is that we haven't, as a school committee, have a lot of experience with this. So I think this is deeper than a superficial goal and objectives to be reached, and that for each one that's identified, there are evidence of completion. So that's our kind of outcome expected, and so when we go to reevaluate, the evidence of completion will be looked at, and we'll see where we stand, and then we adjust, reevaluate, and set goals. So I think Dr. Hollins is so very correct, it's just that this is more complicated situation in evaluating the Superintendent with the new law, and this school committee just really taking it on for the first time.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I appreciate the input, and I agree with Mayor Martin's statement that there are some clear key actions that are essentially those very clear goals that are looking to be achieved. And so, I feel like what we have here is, I think that we have the key actions, and we have the mode to receive the evidence of completion of these key actions, and the completion of the key actions will indicate achievement. And I think that there is a little bit more specific information that may unfold over the course of the year. But in general, I support these goals. I believe that the Superintendent incorporated nearly all of the committee input that was received at the meeting. I did receive input from one member kind of last minute related to the Green River School project, and simply, that individual just simply was interested in reflecting back to the community and to the Superintendent that there is an understanding that there is time and effort that will be spent to continue development of the program at the Green River School building, and there's an interest in having that reflected. Member Ward, for us then, Superintendent.
I'd like a vote.
Oh, my goodness. I think we need a second, don't we?
Order?
Yes, Mayor Martin.
If that's interpreted as a call, calling the question?
I believe it is.
Then it's non-debatable.
It's non-debatable. Okay.
It means you can't discuss.
But don't we need a second?
Is there a second?
I think we need a second.
Oh. Second for-
Don't we need a second?
Second for calling the question.
So you're seconding?
No. Cam made the motion to call the question.
Cam's calling the question. Are you seconding? Okay. Okay. So is there a second to call the question?
And Cam's talking about it.
Second.
Second by Mayor Martin. Okay. So there's no debate on that. Do we want to call the question right now? So that means, do we want to vote right now? Okay. Everybody is...
I was waiting until the question's finished, but I have not had a chance to speak to the votes.
Okay. So, do we want to vote right now? That's the question. Okay. All those in favor of voting right now?
Aye.
One. All those opposed to voting, calling the question, right, voting right now? That's me.
Aye.
Okay. So, calling the question fails. That's right, right? Did I do that right? So we will continue a little bit more discussion. Superintendent, and then Member Alexander.
All right. So, this has been a challenging goal-setting process for me. I appreciate the mayor's comments and the chair's comments about incorporating feedback from the committee. I did work very hard, in part over the holiday weekend, in part during last week, in the midst of other priorities, to try to understand the committee's feedback and to incorporate them into these key actions. As somebody who spends a lot of time with this process, who leads this in my professional life and is attempting to model the process, not just for myself, but for my administrators and my teachers, these goals mean a lot to me. This is probably the most important thing I do all year, because it guides the work of myself and the administrators and the work of the district. I'm troubled at the lack of understanding of how important this is. This is what we do all year. I had two very clear goals. One of them was to spend 70% of my time on students. I removed that goal because there were eight, I believe, items added by the committee at the last meeting. That goal was specific. It was measurable, and it was unattainable because of the number of things that this committee added. I removed that goal. The other goal that was very clear was to focus on improving social-emotional learning for students from trauma. I had specific, measurable actions. I removed that goal because it's unattainable because of the number of items that have been added by this committee. I believe that the items that are in front of you are very, very challenging for a well-resourced district with an assistant superintendent, a curriculum director, and experienced veteran staff, and no budget difficulties. I believe that the goals that are in front of you are very difficult for Greenfield. I'm willing to do them to the best of my ability, but I hope that this committee understands when it comes time for evaluation that these are hard, that this is a lot of work, and I hope people understand when it comes time to evaluate, that this is directing the work of the district for the next year. This is not about getting credit. This is where we focus our effort. I heard conflicting feedback from this committee. For example, when you all wanted me to focus on the budget, I wrote that into my goals. I was told to remove it from my goals, because I was told that I was expected to do it anyway, so I then removed it from my goals. Then when I removed other things from my goals, I was told that they should be in my goals, because I'm doing them anyway. I do have some concerns about the conflicting guidance I've received through this process. Again, I'm doing my best to incorporate the feedback I've heard, and I serve at the pleasure of the committee, so I'm trying my best to follow the direction of the committee as a whole. But I do want to remind you that our focus in this district needs to be on our students. I'm concerned and troubled that if we don't focus in that direction, that we will not see the results that we want to see, which is good things for every student in every school. And we need to be talking positively about what's happening in our schools. We need to be supporting our educators, and we need to be celebrating our students. We need to be talking less about the grammar and the policies and the language and the meetings and the minutes. We need to be talking about our kids, and I would like to see that reflected in a measurable goal for this committee.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Ward, you had your hand up? I'm sorry, Member Alexander? I'm so sorry.
Now, the only thing I want to do is make sure the Superintendent had a chance to ring in before we did any votes. That's all.
Thank you, Member Alexander. There's a motion on the table. Is there any further commentary? Okay. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of supporting the Superintendent's FY19 Superintendent goals as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Any abstentions? One abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Let's take five before we move into the next couple items. We'll return at 8:20 PM. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We are... We're back from our quick recess. We went over by three minutes. I appreciate the suggestion, Member Ward, to just take a little timeout. I think we're all energized and ready to move on. So, our next agenda item is the Green River School program postponement. And this is coming from... There is a recommendation from the subcommittee that met earlier today. Member Karen, did you want to comment on that now?
Sure. So, as we know, we've been working towards getting that program up and going. At our last meeting, we were... Last full committee meeting, I believe it was Carol, told us that they had to resend the heating out for bid again. So, as of now, there has been no communication to us that there has been any movement on that. We have no indication that a plan will be committed in any... Finish in any amount of time. So, as a subcommittee today, we recommended that we postpone due to a lack of heating system, opening the Green River School until next fall, the fall of 2020. But we would like to hear plans in late spring to have that ready to go.
Okay. Thank you, Member Karen. Did you want to just simply put that in a motion?
Sure. I moved to postpone the start of the new Green River School programming with the intent to hear follow-up on planning and program proposal in the spring of 2019.
And that would be postponing the start until fall of 2020?
Correct.
Is there a second? Second by Member Hollins. Okay. One second, Mayor Martin. Is there any further discussion that you want to speak to your motion?
It's not included in that motion, but we wanted it to be clear that this was not because of our delay in programming, but a delay in building maintenance.
Thank you, Member Karen. Mayor Martin, I saw your hand.
Would Susan please repeat that? I think somebody said fall.
Would Susan repeat? Somebody, I think, said the fall of 2020. I think we mean the fall of 2019.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Martin. I am the one who said that, and you are correct. Fall 2019 for the school year FY20. That's accurate, right, everybody? Cool. Thanks, Mayor Martin. Member Hollins?
At our meeting, we talked about that the financing of what we're going to do... The discussion has to continue of what it's going to cost that can be worked into the budget we're working on now for next year. It doesn't change the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Member Hollins. Any further comments? Okay. We have a motion on the table to postpone the start of the new Green River School programming until fall 2019 with the intent to hear follow-up on planning and program proposal in the spring of 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Onto number eight. So, this is an emergency request for PA systems, urgent safety and security need. And this is in the amount of $37,401. So, in your packet, there is a draft letter that I believe was drafted by Director Nemberkow. And this is a situation that can easily get confusing, so I actually would like to yield to the superintendent to give the details of this and try to stay very clear about what's happening with this. There was already some confusion about this, but really what we're asking for is to ask Mayor Martin to put forward an emergency, and it's emergency in quotations, essentially to expedite the process. An emergency request for additional funding to support the installation of wired PA systems at some of our school buildings. Superintendent?
So, as the committee knows, we have been focused on safety and security. Several years ago, there was a capital request which came forward and was endorsed. I believe my recollection is, was endorsed at the level of the school committee and then endorsed by the Capital Improvement Committee and then endorsed by the mayor and then brought forward to the town council. And that was for wired public announcement systems in our schools that needed significant upgrades to those systems. The intent of this is that if you are in a lockdown drill or if you're in a situation where you need to make a safety and announcement, that you can do so to all areas of the building, to a visitor, to a staff member, to a student, and that this would just be a way to make a safety or emergency announcement. That funding was then subsequently reduced at the council level, and there were some suggestions made about some cost-saving measures by using a wireless system. It's my understanding that both then and now, the recommendation of the chief of police, the fire chief, the technology director, the business manager, and myself was for a wired system. And we have recently gone back, and there are some security reasons for this. So, a wired system is a more secure system and presents fewer opportunities for somebody to hack into that system, and it makes a more secure and reliable communication system in the event you need to depend on a communication system. You certainly want it to be there for that purpose in the event you need it. We, at this point, have an allocation previously approved in the amount of $155,000, but the actual cost of the wiring for that project exceeds this by $37,401. And so, that difference is, right now, an obstacle to actually wiring the system that we need. This amount would bring all of our schools up to speed in terms of PA systems that are fully adequate. Because the technology has also improved in this period of time, there are some additional options that are available to us that weren't available several years ago for this same price range. So, in summary, the amount is pretty much the same that was previously brought forward. It was reduced, and we're looking for it to be restored roughly to the same amount that was requested a couple of years ago. And the reason it is emergency is it is an urgent safety need, and we are hearing from the state police and our local law enforcement that this is absolutely an urgent issue. And I'm asking that the committee weigh in on this. Before any action is taken, this is a memo in front of you that's addressed to the mayor because, as you know in the charter, only the mayor can put this request forward to the council. But because it's a matter affecting the schools, it's really in the jurisdiction of the school committee. So, that's why it's in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. There was some conversation at public meeting, the community... The CRE meeting, the community relations... Sorry, I was thinking resources. Community Relations and Education Subcommittee of the council. That's part of how the idea for this process surfaced, and our counselors have continually expressed support for all the ongoing attention to detail related to student safety. Steve, did you want to add anything additional?
No. It's, you know, wiring's hard, and fishing wire through existing buildings is very hard. So, if you look at these numbers, you say, wow. You know, wiring for just one system is about a third of the cost of the actual system. So, it is surprising, but it's not unusual.
To start discussion, let's start with a motion. I would entertain a motion to move to request the mayor to put forward an emergency request to council in the amount of $37,401 to support the installation of wired PA systems.
So moved.
Moved by Karen. Second by Alexander. Seeing Member Hollins' hand.
We have enough money, if you look at the total cost for each school, the system plus the wiring, with the money that's already been awarded to do all the schools but one. It looks like there's two schools where the total cost to do the complete school... It looks like we could do most of the schools but one. So, my question is, do we have to hold up all of the schools where we have money for some of the schools?
Which school would you like not to have a PA system?
That isn't my question. I'm just saying, do we have to hold up getting this in... I'm not suggesting we not ask for the money. I'm saying, we have enough money to do... Start the work. They're all not going to be do... It's going to be one school, and then they're not going to... The team's not going to work on all the schools at once. So, that was just my first thought. We're holding up all the schools when we have money for some of the schools?
Okay. Thank you, Member Hollins. Member Karen?
I just want to... Without going into too much detail about other school safety, other schools in our district, I was in a lockdown situation this week, and a system like this would have made everything... I was in a lockdown situation this week, and this type of system would have saved a lot of confusion and stress on a lot of people. So, I just really want to reiterate that this isn't frivolous expenditure. This is a safety thing, and I really want to make sure that we give the superintendent and everybody the support, the mayor the support, to get it through with the town council.
Thank you, Member Karen. Mayor Martin?
I think there are some technical issues with this. I don't have the original motion that was amended before me, but my recollection is that the council amended the original request for funds with the word wireless. And wireless prevented the hardwiring of the PA systems, and so that's why there's been such a delay because of the cost. That was never initiated, and there was never any movement to, I think, spend that money or to go into the wireless system. So, technically, we'd have to bring that motion back, that capital allocation that was amended to wireless, bring it back to the council and have them reconsider the wireless and have it removed so that it could then be used for PA systems and assumed hardwired. And I think that's possible. Or to rescind the entire motion of 155 and ask for what's needed to do the hardwired system. Another observation is that I don't believe if school choice spent the money that the stabilization fund would be able to reimburse itself, which is the city, which is the school choice fund. So, probably not best to spend those funds before being rejected. And lastly, you know, I think it's... The PA systems are very important. As we noticed and observed this weekend, those information is very important during those critical first moments. So, I think we can bring this forward. Maybe the Director of Financial Management and Town Accountant and... Maybe the Director of Financial Management and Town Accountant and Steve could get together and figure out what is the best way to approach the request from the council. They are the original ones who rejected and modified.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, Superintendent.
I just wanted to note that this memo was the result of the most recent town school meeting, at which the Just That Mayor, the Town Finance Director, and the Business Manager, myself, and the School Committee Chair did discuss this, and it was with the City Council President. It was believed that the best way to do this was in this manner. So, if there is a different approach, we'd be happy to entertain that. At this point, though, we're just really interested in moving forward in an expeditious manner because of the safety concerns, and because there's bid process and timelines that really need to be adhered to, to make sure that this can work. We also approached the town electricians originally to cut down on the wiring cost, and only proceeded with obtaining these quotes when that avenue also wasn't available. So, we really have exhausted all available avenues. And I am looking for the support of the committee, because if what we're really saying here is that there's a technical issue in one sentence in the council, I personally am not comfortable going to sleep at night knowing that that has obstructed the basic safety of our schools. And we really, we need a solution, and I believe we need a solution tonight.
Member Ekstrom?
I'm going to ask a question that sounds a little obvious, I guess. How is it that these PA systems would differ from the ones that are already in schools?
So, they're a two-way system. And I may be a little vague here on purpose because, just because we're talking about security and safety and so forth. But they're, so they're significantly more upgraded than what you might think of as the old-school system, right? So, many of us went to school with a system where you could hear somebody kind of going wah-wah-wah over the speaker. This is a two-way system, which allows for communication, obviously, two ways. There's also an external notification on the outside of the building by way of a sort of a blue light in an announcement that provides an external. And there are some additional features to it that are upgrades that weren't previously available. We looked at sort of spot checking, you know, if you have a PA system in place, can you just replace where it's not operational or where you need to upgrade it? The cost of doing that is actually just as expensive, and you end up with not much value for that. So, in consultation with a number of security professionals, this was the cheapest and best option by far.
Member Holland's?
I request clarification from the mayor. Mayor, did you say that there's, did I understand you to say that there is a reason that none of this money could be spent at this time?
According to the order from the town council, I believe the $155,000 for the PA system is a wireless PA system. So, money spent on a hardwired system would be noncompliant with the order from the council.
Member Holland's?
So, I'd like to make a motion, if that's what we need.
There's a motion on the table. Would you like to make an amendment?
Can we hear back what it is?
Sure. The motion on the table is to request that the mayor put forward an emergency request to council in the amount of $37,401 to support the installation of wired PA systems.
It sounds to me like that isn't the motion, if none of the money that we have. Let me just think. I would make a different motion. I don't know how to fix this one.
Mayor Martin?
I think the intent of the motion is clear enough. And I'll check with the Finance Director and City Clerk to make sure that we've affirmed the specific use of the $155,000. And if it requires a return to the council, we can do that in the December meeting. And if it doesn't, and it only requires a request for funds from stabilization, then we can also do that at the December meeting.
Member Holland's?
So, can we deal with the motion and maybe make a motion for that? For what the mayor said? Never mind. It sounds like what we need to do is to ask that, as expediently as possible, we can resolve the use and move forward, which is a little bit different.
Mayor Martin, do you have a suggestion for language? That you sounded pretty confident that you understand the intent here. Do you, are you more comfortable with language that is?
Well, I have a motion on the table. If the motion was withdrawn, I could move another motion.
Okay. Katie, you moved it.
I would move that the School Committee request that the Finance Director and the Business Manager meet to develop language for a proposal to complete the financing of the PA systems in the school system.
Can you repeat the last part? Move to develop language to?
Create financing for the PA systems in the district.
Friendly amendment?
Member Holland's?
Is there a second?
I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Holland's.
Could I suggest a friendly amendment? That that motion begin with the School Committee reprioritize completion of the PA system project as soon as possible, and?
Yes, Superintendent?
Just to comment on that briefly. The language "reprioritize" was recently used by the committee in a vote that I'm not sure if it added to the confusion, but there was subsequently a council vote regarding a capital request. And they, the council, expressed some confusion about the term "reprioritize" and what that superseded. So, I would advise against that. I do also want to note that the motion that's on the table right now doesn't address the expediency factor, the need for an emergency motion. So, while I'm sure the Business Manager and Finance Director would be happy to help, and I'm very grateful to any support the mayor or clerk can provide, I think it would be helpful if it's clear in the motion that the committee is looking to do this outside of the normal first and second reading process, or if you're looking for that type of process. I want to be clear that I'm not comfortable waiting for the two-month review process. These were a request that was made, I believe, two years ago at this point in time. And I think what we need to do is a more accelerated process.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, I'm struggling a little bit with some language. What I'm hearing from the mayor is that there is support to see this through. And there are a couple of components here, and we want to address them. So...
Should the language include "hardwired PA system", so we make it clear that that's what we need the money for?
Yes, I think it should. I also think that we should consider putting in the numerical value. Susan, could you read us the motion? Thank you. Member Alexander?
Okay, though I do appreciate the mayor working with us on trying to get this done in a proper fashion. Sorry, I forgot to turn it on. Sorry about that. I do appreciate the mayor working with us on trying to get this process done in a proper-worded fashion, but I think we're steering away from the intention of getting the wireless, the hardwired PA systems in here with the word "emergency" and getting this done quickly and as possible. And I guess my question is going to be, if we go with the motion, does this put months on the timeline of actually getting a decision from town council? And which is the most expedient way to get this done?
Thank you, Member Alexander. I think it does. It definitely does extend the timeline. And there seems to be support from council. I know that there, I know, I've heard from individual members that there is support to move this forward. And the council president, again, as the superintendent noted, was involved in a collaborative conversation about how to address this in, you know, a quick way. Member Holland's, did I hear, see your hand?
I was going to try some wording that may be...
Okay.
How about something like this? Having clarified that hardwire systems is what the School Committee needs, the School Committee requests the mayor and the business officials of, the mayor assists the School Committee in expediting the PA project as, PA project.
Again, point of order. So, there's a motion on the floor.
There is.
We need to focus on the motion and either vote it or reject it.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
And move on with the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. So, I believe that there was an amendment that you accepted, Mayor? Is that correct?
I don't recall exactly, but someone mentioned a description of "hardwiring system". I think that's more succinct, and that should be, that's the intent, to go from wireless to hardwire.
Okay.
So, I think there's no problem with adding that. I am concerned about the $155,000. That is a wireless system. We can't spend that. We need to get that $155 changed to hardwired. So, whether it's a $240,000 request or $155 change plus $37 is, you know, something that has to be worked out.
Okay. So, can we repeat the motion as we think it is right now? And would you accept a friendly amendment to move the action forward immediately? Mayor Martin?
Simply yes. I'm just thinking of a phrase using "emergency"
Right.
that might be available to call a quicker meeting.
Yes.
Not a special meeting, but they could act in one meeting date.
So, a friendly amendment to put forward and, put forward the revised, put forward the revised order as an emergency request to council? Does that make sense, Susan? Can you? Can you read it one more time?
Second.
You accept that amendment? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent and Member Holland's?
Just to clarify, I believe this is the spirit of it, but it's, I just would like to be clear in the motion, the Business Manager and Finance Director cannot put it forward to council. So, again, that would have to be, the Business Manager and Finance Director can devise the language to present to the mayor. Only the mayor can present it to council.
Yes. So, can we insert the mayor? And I believe that's your understanding, right, Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Holland's?
What I remember about this is it was approved. The mayor proved it, that we have PA systems. It went to City Council. And I think a member of the City Council said, "I think it should be wireless." And since the whole issue of getting PA systems was approved, can we not, Mayor, just go to City Council and ask them to remove that restriction because it wasn't possible, instead of going through this whole process again?
Yes, we can do that. That would be one of the options, going to the council. But we deemed additional $37,000 anyway. So, it's going to, that's why I want the Finance Director and the Business Manager together to use these numbers, plus what we already have as a legal order from the council to review, and then present the proper language to the council for an emergency vote.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Susan, to be formal, could you repeat the motion back to us? We are about to vote on it. Yes, Superintendent?
I just have a clarifying question. Mayor, do you know the deadline that this would need to be to the mayor's office to get to committee chairs, or?
My understanding is tomorrow. I think it might be end of day. It was discussed at the town school meeting. Part of the reason why there is some urgency is, and why there was a draft letter included, is to expedite the process, to really support the essence of the motion here. So, yes, Mayor Martin?
Tomorrow would not be the deadline. So, the deadline for the December meeting, which I think is December 19th, is five days before the second, or the first Tuesday, which I think is the second. So, it would be somewhere around November 27th, 28th.
Thanks, Mayor Martin. I was speaking to November. I apologize for that.
November's closed.
November.
And the November 20th meeting was closed on November, five days before the first Tuesday in November.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
It's a very difficult schedule to do city business. That changes almost every 48 hours.
It's true.
So, stick with that schedule. But we're doing it.
Okay, so there's motion on the table? Are we ready to vote? Okay? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that, you said you're an aye, right? Okay, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Yes, Member Holland's?
I have a follow-up comment about the letter. It's not negative. I want to thank the, the letter, this letter, then, is probably not a letter that should go to the City Council because it does, it no longer represents what we want to do.
Thank you, Member Holland's.
And I appreciate that the letter in our packet tonight is different than the one that came initially because it was very alarming. But I don't think this should...
Thank you, Member Holland's. There's no motion on the table to support that discussion right now, but I appreciate the input.
That is the memo that came in the packet.
This is the memo, yeah.
That is the packet.
It is the...
That's the exact same one.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your patience as we got through that. And Mayor Martin, thank you for your support in moving that forward. We are now on number nine, resolution. This was brought to my attention by Mr. Paul DiMarco and the GEA. Paul, you're welcome to comment. Please make your comments concise. Before I yield to you, I just want to say that, you know, I think that this is something that the entire committee can get behind. I think that we all agree that there's need for additional funding. And we have before supported the efforts of the Foundation Budget Review Commission and changes to Chapter 70A to further support our students. I did utilize the tool on the MTA website to see estimates for additional Chapter 70A that researchers are estimating for the year of 2023 if the changes were implemented. And the tool indicated that approximately $1.2 million of additional Chapter 70A would come to Greenfield. Paul, did you want to add something? And thank you for bringing this to our attention.
This is part of an effort that MTA is making on a statewide basis. We're trying to get school committees across the state. We're going to every school committee to adopt a similar resolution to put the heat on the legislature to get this done. They've been chronically underfunding the public education in Massachusetts for almost the past 20 years. Districts nearby that have passed it already are Amherst, Pelham, Chickapie, Springfield, Pittsfield, I think Ranby as well. It's all the towns off the top of my head. So we're trying to get this done everywhere.
Thank you, Paul.
If you have any questions about it, I'm happy to try to address them.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Let's start deliberation with a motion. I'd entertain a motion to support the resolution in support of full funding for our public schools as presented. Moved by Member Alexander, seconded by Member Karen. Member Alexander, did you want to speak to your move?
No.
No? Okay. Any comments? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Paul, a couple of questions. Can you fill in the blanks?
Sure. I haven't done that since I was a school-aged kid, but we can play that game.
It's usually one of the easier questions to get, fill in the blanks.
So the district is Greenfield, and the additional state aid was what I noted just moments ago, approximately $1.2 million in additional Chapter 70 aid.
It's 188,44, 188,444 is what we project. And that would be each year. And the full amount wouldn't be reached until four years out, 2023, but it would be ramping up to that level each year.
So the 1.2 million is...
The tool that I, pardon, the tool that I used on the MTA website was specific to Greenfield, and it estimated approximately $1.2 million in the year 2023.
Annually or aggregate? So Paul was just saying that's a hundred...
That's an annual, that's an annual amount of Chapter 70 money that the, that the school district would receive in Greenfield.
In 2023?
Yes. And it would be, it would be ramped up too then, because we're not asking the state to just come up with the full bill this spring. We're giving them the opportunity to put together the financing.
So 1.2 million more than we have now in 2023?
Yes. And 24 and 25, and it would be indexed for inflation.
Okay. I'm just wondering how that fares with the increases that are existing now. So 1.2 million in 2023, which is, say, five years from now, is less than 10%, less than 9% of what we're getting now. So over five years, we would have a 9% increase over today. So what is, what would we usually get? Do we, I need that back information. So if we were getting 2% a year, that would be 10% in five years. So this would actually be less than what we would normally get.
No, this is increased aid.
This is on top of...
This is above and beyond of what the state is providing to Greenfield right now.
That's correct.
Right now, exactly what I'm saying.
Yes.
So the increase of 1.2 million is roughly, we get 12 million, say, more or less. 12 million from Chapter 70, so that's 10%.
That's what it works for Greenfield. It's based on a calculation of your special needs kids, English language learners.
Right. I understand how the formula works. I'm just curious as to...
Good, because I don't actually know how the formula works. It's kind of calculated math.
Just throw in everything and that works.
But, yes, I understand the basics of the formula and what...
So I'm thinking, is it, what is the benefit over what we would normally receive in an actual increase over five years?
$1,188,440 each year.
Okay.
Above the current amount that you're receiving in Chapter 70 funding.
Okay.
But my understanding is that this is additional funding. So any kind of increase that we would see outside of addressing these particular areas would, in theory, remain the same, or, you know, there would, there could still be increases in Chapter 70 funding as we've seen over time.
Yes.
But then on top of that, there would be the additional...
Yeah. It would keep the minimum aid funding formula the same, except it would increase it by $50 each year. Right now, it's increasing by $30 per student each year. The reason we're doing that is because under the FBRC's original recommendations, some towns, a number of towns, almost 40% of the towns in Massachusetts wouldn't get anything. This is kind of like the third rail in politics. You can't expect people to vote for other people to get something. So we're trying to make sure that all the towns are covered by it.
I think full funding is great, but I would, I would like to support full funding for all legislative mandates having to do with schools. And we don't have full funding in transportation. We don't have full funding in Chapter 766.
This would actually include the rural, the regional transportation funding, which is what the legislature has made a commitment to do. It would also help to offset the health insurance costs that you've seen increase for your staff.
Would, Chapter 70 provides for health insurance costs?
This FBRC-recommended budget increase would include money for health insurance for staff.
How would that be transferred to the, out of the Chapter 70 into the city or town?
As I understand it, it comes from the, the state to the city, and then the city disperses it. So the city would be able to take that off the top of their health insurance costs.
And for what it's worth, I did check in with Representative Paul Mark related to this, just to get a little input from him and see where things are. And he noted to me that, you know, right now, essentially, this is, this is tabled, and committees will reconvene in February. And he actually said that, you know, this is great, and he would appreciate, you know, hearing this. And he obviously supports that. He's been a real supporter of public education. In addition, he did say that he felt like the May 1st deadline that's here is probably not realistic. He suggested potentially changing the language to, in the next session, in the upcoming session, in order to actually support getting it done.
We, the Senate passed a very similar bill this year. It died in the House, and we want to keep their toes to the fire. So we're urging all the school committees, and we're taking this to town councils and select boards as well, to include the May 1st deadline, because otherwise legislature, if it isn't under the gun, just puts things off. So we figure they have five months to get it done if we, if they start in January. They are sworn in on January 2nd, May 1st. There's plenty of time to do this.
Member Hollins, did I see your hand, or no?
Yes. I was just going to try and move this along. What I note to be absolutely true is paragraph three, the state's foundation budget formula is woefully out of date. And the last paragraph, that there's a new foundation budget formula that we should recommend they pass. So just recommend we vote that and move on, because it's important.
Okay. Are you offering an amendment to the proposed language that's here? That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, because I think those are just absolutely factual, and it's not possible to meet, vet out every single fact. And I think we should vote to support the new foundation budget formula.
Member Karen?
I, I would rather support the entire document, because I'm not really sure how the first two statements aren't completely true. Every student should be able to have free public school education. That is clearly true. No matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools, teach the whole child. That's absolutely true. I mean, I guess I could argue about the amount that they're woefully out of budget, but I, I'm not, it's a roundabout number. I understand the concern about a May 1st maybe not being like a reasonable deadline, but I feel like at the same time, as Paul said, we need to hold them accountable. And if we just say, well, sometime in the near future, please fix this, they're just going to be like, yep, got it, and not do it.
Thank you, Member Karen. I did receive during the course of the deliberation, a request from Member Alexander to read the resolution in full out loud. Did you want to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, I can read it, yeah.
I believe that you moved it, right? Is that right?
I just suggest that we read it out loud, so that everybody knows. Because not everybody in the room can see this.
Great. Is your mic on?
Yeah.
Cool.
Remember to turn it on this time. Resolution in support of full funding for our public schools. Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. Whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, therefore underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential education, educational services, and whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring Greenfield Public Schools up to, and I'm going with the number that was said earlier, 1.2 million dollars, an additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth, and whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation, legislation in the past session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the school committee of the Greenfield Public Schools urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Thank you, Member Alexander, for reading the resolution in full. I didn't hear a specific amendment offered by Member Hollins. She's shaking her head. So there's a motion on the table to support this resolution as Member Alexander just read it. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm seeing a unanimous yes. So thank you very much for calling attention to this, and thank you for waiting a very long time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, so I'm looking down and seeing that I am painfully off the mark with our timing. But we have two quick items, and then some executive session. So it is 9:13. We'll continue on. The number 10, discussion on school committee meeting sites. I'll entertain a motion to move to hold the December and January school committee meeting at GCTV with the intent of moving to the John's On site when possible and coordinated. In addition, a motion to request that the superintendent and/or chairperson follow up with mayor's office, GCTV, and other relevant parties to coordinate usage of the John's On space.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, moved by Karen, seconded by Member Alexander. I'll just speak to this briefly. Some changes have, have occurred in our lives. One of the things is that, you know, Member Alexander has generously donated much of his time to help in the setup of what we see here. And that is not necessarily possible any longer. In addition, we have some constraints related to our school staffing in order to support the meeting here at the cafeteria. So this is coming to the committee's attention in part to address that, and in part to kind of go in tandem with what, the action that's getting taken at the council level. My understanding is that the council is planning to begin to meet at the John's On site at the start of the new year, and there's some coordination happening with that. So yes, there it is. Is there any comment or question on this? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Well, what are the non-sustainable elements that you mentioned?
So it's about, really about setup and breakdown, and additional costs related to our janitor services, and some constraints that we have on staffing right now at the Greenfield Public Schools related to custodial staff. So basically, we're short-staffed. And it's, it's been difficult to keep up with the committee meetings and the council meetings, and ensure access, and ensure that everything gets set up. And it's something that's just been very difficult.
So I think the parts of these same elements are the same at the John's On Center, setting up and putting everything back in order after every meeting. So I can see what that, yeah, fine. I think it's probably warmer there.
It might be. It might be. Yes, after some preliminary conversations, there is an understanding that there's more coordination that needs to happen with the John's On site. And it's, you know, yeah, it's, it actually might be a little bit more difficult for us as a school committee to meet there. Hence the suggestion to meet at GCTV in December and January, which I think would also be warmer. And then also, and then follow-up related to John's On.
Good.
Member Hollins, did you have a, your hand up?
I was just wondering why you had said December and January, both months, since we had only talked about December. Small detail.
You meant at the subcommittee? Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. I just wrote December and January because I think that there's additional time for coordination of the John's On space. I think that, as the mayor indicated, there's a lot of details. So I wanted to give us time to, you know, be at the GCTV site and just not have to worry about revoting. At this point, it gives us an extra few weeks. Did you want to amend it, or do you want to leave it? Okay, great. Okay, Member Alexander?
As we saw last summer, we actually had our meetings back at GCTV for the months of July, July and August. And it was my understanding that it did make life a little easier for our custodial staff taking care of the building, not having to babysit us. The other thing I like to point out is, is we're also coming up on basketball season. I remember last year trying to hold a meeting when the building has a game going on across the hallway.
Thank you, Member Alexander. Okay, any further discussion? Everyone's looking a little bored. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So that passes unanimously. We will, oh, I'm sorry, did you say no?
I didn't.
You didn't vote? What's your vote?
No.
Your vote's no. So nobody, Member Ward. Thank you, Member Ward. Motion passes. So we will meet next month at GCTV. And follow up on the rest. The next item is the American School Board Journal subscription. This was brought to my attention by Member Hollins. She had an interest in committee members having access to the American School Board Journal, which is the official journal of the National School Board Association. So there's one sheet in your packet that has some basic information about subscription. It sounds like, oh, did you want to speak to it actually, Member Hollins? Or if you want to go ahead and put forward the motion and then speak to it, that would be okay?
I just used to work places where every school board member was given this subscription because it kept you seeing what's going on around the country and what the big issues are. And, and it was a source of like, just constant information about being a school board member from the National Association. So it's not very expensive. And I mentioned that if we're a learning organization, that maybe there should be a way that it's easy for people to read up on what's going on in governance around the country.
Thanks, Member Hollins. I think that, you know, with a little investigation, we may be able to also have a group rate. I read that there are some discounts for kind of bulk orders. So did you want to move this, Member Hollins?
I move that we provide the NSBA Journal to our school governance members.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Martin. Yes, Superintendent?
Is it, maybe I misunderstood, but...
Is it, maybe I misunderstood, but is it possible to provide one subscription for the committee and to distribute it in the packet? Or is it an individual subscription per committee member? Does it go to the home? Does it go to the?
You know, I don't know if, I think that there are some details that need to be kind of worked out and, you know, maybe it's...
The reason I ask is just that if we're going to have one subscription, I think that's quite manageable. If we're going to have seven subscriptions, I would just want to verify with individual members that they want the subscription before we incur the cost, depending on individual members, whether or not they want that. Certainly, I would support it if it's going to be well-used. I just want to verify that.
So...
Could we start with one subscription for the committee and see how that works?
I think, my suggestion would be to investigate any discounts and via email, ask what committee members may be interested in getting it and then just follow through with it. Great. Does that some sound good to everybody? Yes, Mayor Martin?
I think it provides for an online version. I don't know if that would allow three or four people to have the same password, so...
I know. I'm like, I, unless there's...
I shouldn't have said that sooner.
Unless there's something in, you know, their subscription that allows for that, that maybe, they may have that available. So there is a motion on the table to allow for committee members to have a subscription to the NSBA Journal. I don't know if those were the exact words.
To provide the NSBA Journal to our school governance.
Okay, and then the agreed-upon intent here, everybody, is that you don't have to have it unless you want it and we'll send out an email asking people if you want it and then after that, the superintendent's office will look into how to, you know, solidify a rate or whatever. Does that work? Everybody agrees on that intent? I'm seeing yeses. Okay, that's on TV now. That's binding. Okay, great. So let's vote on this motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wow, that was unanimous. Thank you. Member Ward wants a subscription. Okay, so we're going to skip Number 12 because this is something that may get addressed after our executive session. So we are on to new business. I'd like to keep this brief because we do have executive session. However, there were a couple items that came via email. Member Hollins, are you interested in addressing new business today?
I would like to just bring up one thing. I really just appreciate being able to get information and read it and when I get a file with 150 pages, I can't see the basic business stuffs. I, I'd just like to ask that the wonderful publications just be in its own document and our business action materials just be together in a document. So you can get right to the agenda and what you have to absolutely read and then you can read all of this separately.
Okay, are you putting forward a motion or would you like this to be addressed at the next meeting or what is your suggestion here? This is a change in practice.
Well, the practice never was to have 120-page document. It's relatively recent since I've been on the school committee.
So I definitely don't want to get into the minutia here, but what I'm hearing you request is very simple and you're requesting that the information about the goings-on in our schools...
All the newsletters be in there.
That tends to be at the start of the packet, be in a separate PDF, and the rest of everything else be in a separate PDF.
Yes.
Okay, so are you moving this or are you interested in bringing this up next year?
Yes, I'll make the motion to make it easier for school committee members to see their business meeting materials, to separate that and have a separate file with all the wonderful school newsletters.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Mayor Martin, okay. I'm seeing Jordana.
I don't have a problem either way, I guess, but it just seems like asking someone to do extra work so that we don't have to scroll through stuff. And I actually don't have a home computer, so I have to scroll through it on my phone and it's really not that big of a deal. I mean, it's, I just, I understand the easy, ease of having two separate documents, but it's asking someone to do more work so you have, can do less and I just, I don't know.
Member Ekstrom?
I understand the desire to print everything out because I like to do that as well. You don't have to print the entire document and you could do pages 1 through 40 or whatever and thereby not having to print the whole thing. So I don't, you know, I'd prefer less work for somebody than more, so I'm not certain that we need to have them separated out.
Thank you, Member Ekstrom. Yes, Superintendent?
Could I try again?
Sure.
So I also just want to say, I think I'm objecting to the phrase "school committee business" in one packet and everything else in another. So first of all, the superintendent's report is where the newsletters come in and I've asked in the past that if the committee does not value that report, that it, that I not spend time on it. We put together these packets, we share our goings-on, we try to share that not just with the committee but with the public at large. This is also part of my evaluation. This is part of the concern about the evaluation process. I give you an update every single month on what happens in the district related to the four performance standards that the superintendent has evaluated on. That's in the packet that has just been dubbed "not committee business."
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Hollins?
You know, I'm not trying to make a small issue and as a governing board member, I like to get the packet and read it. I can't do all of this on the computer, so I often ask, can I come in and pick up a copy? I don't know if anyone else does it, but that's, but I, I like that and I, then I can do what I'm elected to do. And I've been told when I call to come in and pick up a copy, it's not all together and it has something to do with this. So I don't know why it has to be hard for someone to just get the materials they want before the meeting, not 10 minutes before. I called the last superintendent before me. People always had the stuff, it was easy to read. I just find it really hard to get the stuff.
So I think we're straying from the motion. The motion is actually to...
That's why I made the motion, it would just be easy to be able to get the materials.
So the motion is to divide the PDF document into two documents with the superintendent report, including documentation of goings-on in our schools in one document and other committee business in another PDF. I'm just going to vote no on this simply because I actually find it really helpful when I'm looking for things in the history of my email. It's really easy for me to like look up the date or just like go back and when it's all-in-one, it's really helpful to just have it all-in-one. So that's part of the reason why, and for whatever reason, it seemed, it does add an extra step. I saw your hand, did you have something else to add?
There was a note that the packets have not been 120 pages until Committee Member Hollins was on the board. I would agree that they have become much longer. If the committee is interested in shorter packets, this takes a lot of time to put it together, we can make them shorter. Their length is in response to the agenda items and the requests of the committee. If it's too much material for you all to read, trust me, it takes us longer to put it together.
I'm only talking about the newsletters.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to divide the PDF into two PDFs. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
One aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, six no's, so motion does not carry. I'm sorry, oh yeah, you're still here. That's right.
Does the school committee, may I ask what question?
The mayor said no, right? You said no?
No.
Is the school committee's position, then, can you clarify?
That members cannot have their materials in advance.
No, no, Member Hollins, that was not the motion that was on the table.
But is that the intent?
That was not the motion that was on the table.
But are we allowed to have it in advance, a hard copy? If we request it or does, no? It'd just be helpful to know?
It's my understanding that if you'd like a hard copy in advance, the superintendent's office will do their best to accommodate that. That's my understanding. Is that, yes, Superintendent?
It would be helpful to know how many people want their packet in advance so we can prepare all of the packets for anyone who wants them in advance. The packets, because they're lengthy, take quite a while to put together. Today, it took two people a lot of the day.
Thank you, Superintendent. So with that feedback, Member Hollins, if that's your intent, please just state so to the superintendent's office and they can try to accommodate that.
Just give us the date and time. We don't want an individual request every month from different people with different preferences, just if the committee wants to tell us when you want us to have packets available, we'll do that.
Okay, Mayor Martin, you indicated that you had a new business item?
Yes, I'll reserve them for next month.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Martin. Any new agenda items to address for future? Yes.
Just new business, I guess?
Yes, yes.
So I have been looking at our website and I think that the school committee page could be expanded a little bit with more text just to make it easier for people in the community to understand what it is that we do as well as what each of the subcommittees does, just on that first landing. I'm sorry. The website, the school committee website, I would, I think it could use a little bit more information so that it's a little bit more accessible and explains what each of the subcommittees does and what the focus of the school committee is and just sort of in a little bit more plain language. And I would like to see some of that added to, and by aye, I mean, I'm happy to do the text and submit it to someone and have them say yea or nay. I just think it would be better, I think the community would understand more what happens on, in each of the individual subcommittees and would therefore, you know, if you're interested in talking about what's happening for, with Green River School, then you would know that you could go over to Katie's committee or that. Just expand on what's there, make it easier. Does anyone have any objections to that, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Thanks, Member Ekstrom. I tell you what, I moved to have Member Ekstrom review the school committee webpage and put forward a first draft of edits to the content of the page to the committee in, you're not here in December, so January.
Sure.
Second by Member Ward. Any further conversation on that?
Actually, one question. Does it need to come in the full committee? Can I just send it? Can we just all assume, can I send it to superintendent? She takes a look at it and reviews it just to expedite this matter a little bit? I mean, I can CC everyone, it's not going to be, you know, I'm not getting crazy. It'll say this committee does this, this committee does that. XO, school committee members.
I'd like to stick with my original motion, which would be that it would come back to the committee in January. You're welcome to send it for feedback. Super. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous, great. Got a little homework over the holidays. Thank you. Any other new items? I will touch base with you, Mayor Martin, to talk about your suggestion for next month and then, see you none. Okay, so there is a need to enter into executive session this evening. There are several reasons to do so and GCTV, I do believe that we will come back for a vote. Our, so entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of Number 3 and Number 10, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the so, and the chair so declares. This is specific to cafeteria workers and there is one new item specific to Unit A. And also general litigation. And then 10, to discuss trade secrets or confidential competitively sensitive or other proprietary information provided. So, moved by Alexander, seconded by Ekstrom. So roll call, please to enter into executive session.
Committee Member Ekstrom.
Yes.
Committee Member Karen.
Yes.
Committee Member Ward.
Yes.
Committee Member Hollins. Committee Member Nunez.
Yes.
I vote yes. Mayor Martin?
Okay, thank you. Great. So, super. You should press on, turn on your mic. So thank you, everyone. We are back from executive session. We do have one public vote to put forward and then I have one quick note before I let you guys go. So we accept a motion from, a motion to approve the new cafeteria workers' contract, Local 274, for the duration of July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2020.
It's almost 7:00.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. And then, so that now approves, this is our new cafeteria workers' contract. Thank you to everyone who's involved in that process. We're glad to move it along and the mayor's excited to move forward into contract stabilization. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Martin. One last thing before we move to adjourn. I received a request to remind the committee to please utilize your school committee email addresses for school committee correspondence. That's coming from Carol through Jordana, so please do that and that's it.
Okay.
Now we can go.
Moved to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn, Member Alexander.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion?
Let's really think about it.
I approve. Let's vote. Who says yes?
Aye.
Susan wants to stay. Susan didn't vote. Thank you.